Counselors, please take your seats. I'd like to call the order of the February 15th, 2018, meeting of the Barnstable Town Council. Please note that tonight's meeting is recorded and broadcast on Channel 18, and that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, please make their presence known. Seeing none, please silence your devices. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call?
No.
Counselors. Breedenbender.
Present.
Crocker.
Present.
Cullum.
Here.
Dagwan.
Here.
Flores.
Here.
Rapacecki.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Leveque.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Stein-Hilber.
Here.
Tinsley.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
Thank you very much. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the God for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Hebert.
I'd like us to remember the tragedy that happened in Florida, the seventeen children and teachers who were shot. We ask that we think for one second what it would feel like in the town of Barnstable if we had lost seventeen of our teachers and of our students. We send them our love, our compassion, and our deepest sympathy.
Okay. We received some information just in the last few hours, which has prompted me to take old business out of order and take that first thing. Counselor Cullum, could you please read item 2018-062, please?
Yes. Item 2018-062, authorizing submission of growth incentive zone designation application for downtown Hyannis to the Cape Cod Commission. As written.
Thank you very much. The reason we're taking this out of order was obviously the blessing of the council. Just in the last few hours, we received some key information on this. One, which the council has the letter in their packets, the hotel owner has requested to withdraw their request to be included in the GIZ. And the second piece of information we received was that the Cape Cod Commission is unsure when they will pass their new regulations. And this GIZ was written alongside them with the anticipation that they would be passed. So in light of those two pieces of information, if it's the wish of the council, I would entertain a motion that we table this, have it reworked, re-advertised, to bring back on March 1st.
I would like to make a motion that we table this until March 1st.
Check it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that is unanimous. All right. We'll go back to the beginning of the meeting, and we will open public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name, sign in, and please limit your time to three minutes.
Good evening, counselors. My name is Peter Cross. I live in Hyannis, about half a mile south of here. I want to read something to you, and this, I found this on the website. This is the Town of Barnstable mission statement. Hello? Whatever happened there. Town of Barnstable mission statement that's on your website. And it says, "Town of Barnstable's Statement of Priorities: Focus on the Mission of Our Organization and Its Strategies Strategic Plan to Protect the Town of Barnstable, Quality of Life, and Unique Character. Engage our citizens and enact policies that respond to and anticipate the needs of our community through sound financial management, open communication, that engage our public with an equitable balance of resources allocation to improve the quality of life for our residents, businesses, and visitors." And I originally wrote this, or not wrote it, but I originally copied it down off your website, thinking that the inclusion of a few forty acres of land in the GIZ would be on your agenda tonight. And you've obviously headed that one off, so congratulations. I'm not predisposed to opposing the inclusion of that 35 Scudder Avenue property on the GIZ, but I am predisposed to opposing anything that's not fully vetted and given a real sound airing. We put a lot of time into the, I say we, the Town of Barnstable put a lot of time into the GIZ. I recently participated as a member of the Hyannis Fire District Board of Directors in three meetings that were cosponsored by Growth Management and the Cape Cod Commission. They were very informative, very interesting, and I was surprised when I went away on vacation for eight days to do some skiing and came back and found out that, lo and behold, we're going to put 35 Scudder Avenue in the GIZ. And that's something that surprised me. As a fire commissioner in Hyannis, I'm very, very sensitive to the fact that we have tons and tons and tons of not-for-profit properties in the nine square miles of Hyannis. Assessor O'Neill provided at my request nine and a half pages, single-spaced, of all the nonprofits that are located in our nine and a half miles of Hyannis, square miles. Fifty-four, Barnstable Housing Authority, fifty-four single properties. Housing Assistance Corporation, that's going to be coming to you for a regulatory agreement. Thirty nonprofit properties in Hyannis, and they're looking for a regulatory agreement with CPC funds on Ridgewood Avenue, which I'm not predisposed to opposing that either. But the Hyannis Fire District now wants a seat at the table because when regulatory agreements are made, you're affecting us as well as the Town of Barnstable. And the Town of Barnstable spreads the taxing, the taxability, throughout all the villages of the town. But when it's in Hyannis and we lose even sixteen or eighteen hundred dollars worth of tax money, that's, we can't replace easily. And it's not spread over the whole town, it's spread over our nine square miles. So we want a seat at the table. When you're making regulatory agreements, when you're drafting TIFs and things like that, we want to be heard because it's directly affecting the Hyannis Fire District and the businesses and the ratepayers of the Hyannis Fire District. And people say it's difficult to do business in the Town of Barnstable, it's expensive to do business in the Village of Hyannis because we have a tax rate that's not spread over the entire town, it's spread over nine square miles. So if you haven't read the mission statement lately, it's on your website. Read it. We want a seat at the table. We want to be heard. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Harold Robinson, been resident of the Town of Barnstable since 1977, which includes being a resident during the years that I was deployed to Afghanistan, to Iraq, to the Horn of Africa, Somalia included. And part of the reason I really wanted to be deployed was because I knew that the American way had to do with fair play for everyone. And we're not there yet in America, but that's our struggle and that's our goal. And I felt a little uncomfortable leaving this room two weeks ago because it just didn't feel like fair play. I'm so glad that you've taken some remedial action on work on the GIZ. I'm hoping that since you've rescheduled to the 1st of March, we're going to start the entire vetting process because after all, the GIZ proposal now is different. It doesn't include the hotel property, which, by the way, in the original proposal was referred to as a proposed site for the Performing Arts Center. That's in the original proposal but was not allowed to be addressed, even though it was in the wording of the proposal two weeks ago. So now that that's all changed, I'm hoping we're going to start the whole process over and include the public comment section to what is now a new proposal, effectively a new proposal. And of course, the rules of the commission will be new as well. So it all, I hope, starts the clock from go. And I say all of this, I've been a supporter of the symphony since 1977. I have one of the nice little pins for people that have supported it a long, long time. This is not hostile to any of that, it's just a sense that sometimes you don't care who wins the game as long as you know that it felt good to be at the game. And that's where I really hope to come away from town council meetings in the future. Thank you for your patience, I'm sorry for ruminating that way, but I'm appreciative of you listening. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Is there any counsel response to public comment? Counselor Beedenbender.
Thank you, Mr. Cross and Admiral Robinson, for your comments. I am actually very pleased that we are now at the point where we are, where this is getting tabled to March 1st, and there will be more opportunity for public comment. This did come about quickly, there were no backdoor dealings or anything nefarious like that, but things did change early in January. And I will speak as a new counselor, there's a tremendous learning curve, as it is, trying to get on board with everything that's going on, and then a big piece like this falls in your lap, and there's a lot to learn and a lot to understand. So I spent the last three weeks completely immersing myself in this GIZ application. I spoke to every individual I could possibly call or email, I spoke to constituents, I spoke to town employees, I spoke individually with counselors, you know, to sort of like bounce ideas off of, see if I was out of my mind thinking certain things. And at the end of the day, where I'm at now is very different than where I was two weeks ago. But that said, there was a lot of process and conversations and investigation that took place on my part. And the folks out there, the constituents, haven't had the benefit of all those conversations. And I feel that the knowledge that I have gained, the public deserves to be brought along in that process, too. So, you know, in an effort for full transparency, I'm happy that we now have this extra time because it gives us an opportunity to share with the public that whatever decision we make, that they can see how we got there, that there was some sort of logic, that we asked the right questions, and your questions deserve to be answered publicly as well. So I am really pleased that we are here. I do agree with you that it's unfortunate that OPAC was included in the GIZ. I don't think there was anything particularly untoward in that inclusion, however, it gives the perception that there was something happening that the public wasn't aware of. And at the end of the day, perception is everything. So I think that's unfortunate. You know, it also didn't help at all that during public hearing, three out of four, the proponents were representatives of OPAC. So that signals something to the public as well, whether it's right or wrong. So I think it's our responsibility and duty as council people to make sure that we put all that information out there and we answer your questions and we make our decision-making process very transparent and open. So I thank you both, and I thank all of the folks that came forward in this process, your emails, your phone calls, your public hearing moments, your public comments. It is all incredibly valuable, and it is what this is meant to be. So thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. President. So to Mr. Cross, thank you for coming and speaking. And in many ways, I think the Village of Hyannis has gotten a short stick over and over again, when we look at open space and set aside land, and I hope that we can keep that focus, that we need to do something special for Hyannis. So there needs to be a lot more discussion of what goes on in the village. And the GIZ is not to stuff as many beans in the pot that we possibly can. I think we have to keep focusing on the quality of life, especially for the whole town, but especially for Hyannis. So I thank you for speaking. And to Rabbi Robinson, thank you very much for your service, going and representing us. And I think you mean a lot to the troops when you're with the troops, and I appreciate you going there. And one veteran to another, our job is not done, our mission is not done. When we took the oath of office, when we served, our oath was to obey lawful orders and to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. And all politics is really local, and so thank you for observing. Thanks.
Anyone else? Counselor Cullum.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to address Peter Cross's comments first, if I could. We are like-minded and have always been that Hyannis doesn't get what it deserves, it has all the city problems and none of the city benefits. And I think you and I have worked pretty closely to try to ameliorate those issues with Hyannis. And I agree that the nonprofits are stifling our productivity and our potential in taking the money off, taking the properties off tax rolls. I will say that I believe the new leadership at HAC has been very helpful and very forward-thinking in looking at new ways to add workforce housing to their palate and not just the low-income housing that they've had in the past. So I'm looking forward to forging a new relationship with HAC, with the leadership over there, and maybe making some sort of a hybrid model where it's not completely off the tax rolls through a TIF or whatever. For Admiral Robinson, thank you for your comments and for ruminating. You're always welcome to say, to come here to speak your mind, and I think that the words that you spoke are truly important. I, as the representative from that particular precinct, I will say that I am unwilling to vote for anything when there's such public outcry about process and conversation, and there are so many issues, whether they're incredibly technical, like Felicia Penn's issues, she writes amazing letters with lots of good questions, or they're just emotional arguments, like the one piece of property I own, my one asset, is a ranch home that I bought because it was on a golf course, and now I'm really concerned. I think there's a lot of misunderstood things and misconceptions by residents as well. I don't think that people understand that we're not protected now from a 40B buying that property, that could happen tomorrow. So we're not, there's just a lot of arguments that are floating out there kind of as free radicals that don't really, none of it really adds up. And I think that if we clarify the math for everyone over the next two weeks, the discussion will be a little more honed and a little more understandable for people. But there are a lot of issues surrounding that. But, you know, I appreciate all the information and all the emails and all the comments, except the anonymous ones, which I think are really obnoxious, I'll say it publicly, because I don't get to be anonymous, and so I think that you should stand by what you say. But I do think that those are really helpful in sorting things out, and I always listen to the Hyannis Civic Association and make sure that I have my fingers on the pulse of what they're saying, too. So this issue, I'm not, like Peter Cross, I'm not predisposed to saying I don't want that land developed, I'm not trying to stifle anyone's right to sell that land. I just think that we need to move forward with a clear understanding of what we have, what we had, what the plan is for the future, how we map that, so that everybody understands and we maybe can have a little more faith in the town. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Flores.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the public comment. I think everyone has been right on target, and I know that I've had many conversations with fellow counselors and others, people in the public, even though I'm on the North Side relative to how this GIZ basically was going to be predetermined, undetermined. But, you know, I'm only going to make one simple comment. Teaching a lot of leadership courses, you know, we talk about transparency, and we talk about honesty, and there's a very simple quote from Thomas Jefferson that I always use, and it's simply, "Honesty is the first chapter in the book of wisdom." And I think this council as a whole has really taken that, you know, sort of as a mantra, if you will. All of the conversations have been open, they've been just, I don't think anybody wants to do anything that is untoward, as Counselor Beedenbender suggested. We want to do the right thing for the right reasons with the right amounts of information. So with that being said, I'll end it by what I said already, honesty is the first chapter in the book of wisdom. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Dagwan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to say that I think that the GIZ has allowed the town to create some areas where we could really improve the town, particularly Hyannis. However, I think anytime the GIZ is asked to, or the GIZ is being expanded, there's not a lot of input from the abutters around it. And like I think probably many of the other counselors, they've received lots of comment from people who are going to be affected by this, including business owners. I didn't see any of them come in and speak up. I think some of the things that concerns they had should also be vetted out loud as well. But mostly just the abutters that I heard from who were concerned about doing this. So I'm glad that we're not pushing it through so quickly. As a ratepayer in this town of, Village of Hyannis, I also know how this change would affect me and my family and those that live in the vicinity where I live. I am hoping that the next time this comes up, we have a lot more information to move us forward on this area, but that, you know, people feel a little bit more comfortable about it. And I really appreciate it also, the comments that I received, people who had great ideas. Sometimes we come forth and we say, "We don't like this, we don't like that." It's nice when you can also give a solution or an alternative plan. And so I received a couple of those, too, and I hope that the council and the GIZ will look at those proposals as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Beedenbender.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is sort of going in a slightly different direction, but this goes into comments that Mr. Cross made. I was listening to the planning board on Monday night, and some thoughts went through my head. And we, one thing I'd like us to start moving in the direction of, and we're doing it in some areas, but this sort of touches on that, this idea that we're a town. We, yes, we're comprised of multiple villages, but we are a town. And I am feeling more and more that we are getting to the point where Hyannis should not be carrying a greater burden than anyone else in this town, that it is time to start spreading out the cost of these things across the entire town. And I am sure that there are going to be a lot of people in the other villages who won't necessarily like this, but we are so beyond this village situation, and we have to start acting as a unified whole because all of these issues that we have, whether it's housing, you know, there's someone who lives in West Barnstable or wants to, works in West Barnstable or works in another village, but they live in Hyannis because that's where the housing solution is for them. But we're all joined at the hip here, and all of our solutions are going to be done on a townwide level and a regional level. And I think we have to start thinking about all our services that way and how we pay for them. So I would like us to see working on this as we move forward. Thank you.
Counselor Rapacecki.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to respond to Mr. Cross, but I guess I have to. And when Counselor Beedenbender talks about working as a town, we have to remember that there are five fire districts. So if you want to start talking about joining forces and spreading around the money, then talk about consolidation. And that's where it is. And I think, you know, we may have gotten to that point. But remind you, too, that the fire districts are their own entity, and they can have their own taxing authority. If you want a seat at the table, put something in the fire district that taxes these nonprofits or captures some money. No, you laugh, but that's the way it's going to have to be done if we don't consolidate. So I also have to remind you that Hyannis has got the largest commercial tax base and which other villages don't. So, and I know there's some inequity, but remember, you have a pretty large commercial base that pays the majority of the taxes here in the Village of Hyannis. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. We're going to move on to Town Manager Communications, Town Manager Mark Els.
Good evening. I'm Mark Els, Town Manager. This is the update for February 2nd through February 15th. I think you all have a copy of this. We are proceeding with the tasks in the budget action calendar as scheduled, and I've attached the most current action calendar so you can see where we are and what will be coming next. We held our FY 2019 rate hearing on February 13th here in Town Council chambers. The proposed rates are posted on the Town Manager's website. I plan to approve, modify, or deny on March 12th. Typically, after a hearing, unless I have been asked otherwise, to give 30 days of opportunity to hear any additional comment. Many times, people can't make it to the rate hearing, so they can email me, call me, send me a letter, ask them, meet with me, whatever works best for them. So if you want to view those, I think I may have distributed them last time, but you can look right on our website and see what those proposed rates are. The standard and pores rating and report on our bond sale, I put upcoming, but it's actually occurred at this point, upcoming bond sale of 10.6 million, which occurred on February 13th, was assigned a AAA bond rating to this issue and affirmed the AAA on all outstanding debt. We received 10 bids at our bond sale. The low bid came in at 2.73 percent. This is essentially the same rate we received in 2017 in an environment of rising interest rates. Our competitiveness in the marketplace resulted in these favorable results. Director Milne is here if anybody has questions that they would like to ask about our bond issue or about our AAA bond rating. We are required by Town Charter, State Law, and Bond Covenants to conduct an annual financial statement audit. We've received the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017, and the two accompanying documents, reports on federal awards programs and management letter. I'm pleased to report that the town's financial statements received an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion, and there are no questioned costs or findings associated with the federal grant expenditures. These three documents will be added to the finance division's area on the town website so that the public or any of us can view them there. I believe Director Milne has given the Town Council Office copies of these reports. Again, Director Milne is here if you have any questions regarding this. We are working with Mass. DEP, I'm sorry, Mass. Department of Fish and Wildlife, USGS, which is a United States geographic service, and and Department of Environmental Protection Water Supply Staff regarding the future potential water supply wells proposed on the 250-acre parcel northeast of the Hyannis water system. The town is in discussion, and this is in an attempt to cite future public water supply. Town is in discussion with DEP Water Supply as recent as today to schedule these water samples. I know Division Head Kaiser has been talking with DEP. They're going to pull the samples and run them at their lab at their cost for us. So they are working hand in hand. I'm just waiting to hear the date when they're going to do that. We're developing access agreements so that if we, in the event we need to go into wells and install wells, we'll have that in place. We're also developing a joint agreement, which I believe a draft has gone back to USGS and Fish and Wildlife at this point to proceed with the preliminary assessment of locating these wells. Basically, a groundwater model that USGS will develop. It was, and USGS has actually come to us and said that they will contribute about a third of the cost to help us in moving forward. As I reported at a previous meeting, all of this is required under the Water Management Act, so we're going to do it in a way that it will answer Fish and Wildlife's questions, but it'll also answer questions relevant to us proceeding with future potential water supply. We expect to reconvene a larger meeting once we've compiled several of these pieces of information so that we're not just meeting to meet, as far as the collective group with the Commissioner of Fish and Wildlife and some of the higher-level individuals that, like the Secretary's Office of Environmental Affairs and others who had been participating in those groups. I'll keep you advised as we progress on this. We are proceeding with the hiring process for the position of Chief of Police. I've attached a proposed timeline for that process and hope to make a selection in May. I've had many questions about this process. And so I thought I'd take a moment to just walk you through how we are proceeding on this and what you will see in the coming three months. Right now, we, or if I step back actually, going into this after the Chief of Police came to me and let me know that he had planned to retire in May of this year, we knew that there were outstanding issues relevant to the position of the Chief of Police. And the outstanding issue was that there was an ongoing dialogue regarding whether the position was in civil service or out of civil service. So we reached out to the Executive Office of Administration and Finance under which, at the state, the Human Resource Division exists. And the Director of the Human Resources Division, Director Arigo, after multiple dialogues back and forth between myself, our legal department, Director Arigo, and his legal counsel, they ultimately sent us a letter, actually to coincide with when we were issuing the RFP, which I'll describe in a minute, that stated that the position is in civil service. So that would be, so my first question was, does this individual have the authority to make that determination? And the answer was, yes, they do. So then luckily, or not luckily, it was planned. Fortunately, Director Cole from our Human Resources Department and myself had anticipated that this could be an outcome. We had structured the RFP that we had done to bring on a consultant to assist in the selection process of a new chief, because this is a specialized position. You know, we were very fortunate that, you know, we were able to, to have a chief that does a job that we all recognize, we see him all the time. But this decision is one that we need to look at many factors to make sure that the individual that's put into the position is the right fit for the department, right fit for the organization, right fit for the community. So we had planned to bring in somebody who is involved in chief selections. We also structured the RFP so that in the event it went to civil service, we could, it would be a qualified consultant that's acceptable to civil service, because civil service doesn't do this actual process anymore. Civil service requires the community hiring for a civil service position to retain a consultant to assist in doing this. So we structured the RFP so that it would satisfy that requirement. So fortunately, we went out with an RFP that was ready to go. We selected a consultant, civil service approved it. And we are in that process right now. There are requirements that we have so many applicants. There are requirements that they bring forward, three applicants in a prioritized order, and they give those back to the Town Manager. At that point, the Town Manager, this would be a Town Manager appointment, the Town Manager proceeds with a selection process. My intent concurrent with what civil service is doing and doing the assessments with the assistance of this consultant is to do three things. I want to put a questionnaire online, hopefully by the end of next week, so that our citizens can give me feedback on what they would like to see in the next police chief. I've asked, I'm going to reach out to all the civic associations. You know, I've already met with our school superintendent because I want to go into the public schools and speak with our students and get their input. Definitely the high school, but beyond, any school, any, any group that wants to speak with me and share with me what they hope our next police chief, you know, what the characteristics are that they hope our next police chief will possess. And then finally, I create a panel to interview the candidates. So that's what we will be doing moving forward into March and April. And so when we conclude that process, hopefully, we will make a selection of a new police chief. I also, early in the process, made the determination that I would go internal first. If I can't find a appropriate candidate internally, then we would have to broaden the search. So that's where we're at. I hope that in the next three months, we are successful in this and that we are able to bring a new police chief forward. I have lots of people calling anticipating that they would like to be on that selection panel, so. And I thank them all, and when we get to that point, I'll certainly think very carefully about it. I will certainly discuss it with the council and the council leadership, and then I will move forward with that. That concludes my update at this point. If you have any questions of anything one through five, I'm happy to answer them. I'm going to ask Elizabeth Jenkins to come up at this point and provide an update on our progress on the non-residential zoning review and proposed modifications that we've been working on.
Thank you, Mark. Just before Elizabeth jumps up, is there anything, questions for Town Manager, what he's spoken about so far? Counselor Flores.
Thank you, Mr. President. Great report, Mark. I just want to publicly acknowledge item number two, the fact that we do have a AAA bond rating, the fact that we got an incredible rate of 2.73 percent for that bond issue, as well as a clean bill of health with our management letter when we analyzed both the federal government grants as well as internal operations. So with that, I applaud you as the Town Manager, and also especially Mark Mill and his entire staff. This is, this is very hard to come by in many, many communities. It's not something that's given, it's really something that's earned. And so having that recognition, not only coming directly from the bond rating entities, it's also recognized on a statewide level at the recent MMA meeting that we had up in Boston. Barnstable has this reputation of really having solid financial direction, solid financial books, solid financial leadership. So I applaud you as well as Mark and the entire team for that. Secondly, I'm just curious, on the, as the process proceeds for the police chief, the civil service has called for an exam for the, a chief's exam, basically. So if in fact, we decide, or you decide not to recommend an internal candidate, will outside candidates also be on that civil service list?
My, let me get a better answer than I can provide right now on that. They're doing an assessment center. I don't believe that there is a physical exam for police chiefs. And it is an internal search at this point. So I would like to check, I actually have a book that I'll provide to the council that kind of steps you through this process, but I want to look at that. And before I answer your question, I want to make sure I answer it correctly.
And the reason I make that, I ask that question, I'm always a firm believer that we cast the widest net possible to get the best possible candidates. And hopefully, the best candidate will be internal, but if that's not the case, we will at least have people in the pipeline. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Vice President Crocker.
We did see the press follow through with some of the discussion of the disposal of assets of the town. Would you care to talk about the inquiries that came, whether it be by newspaper? I just think we need to talk about this pretty steadily until we get to the end of March and we have an opportunity. And certainly, your assistant, Andy, has carried the ball on a great number of it as well.
If, if it pleases the council, I'd ask Andy to come up to address that.
Good evening. Andy Clyburn, Assistant Town Manager. Counselor Crocker, we did have a follow-up from the Cape Cod Times. Had a nice article in the paper. We've had some inquiries. David Anthony's not with us tonight, but I know that the interest is out there. We've had several inquiries about, not just the 23 parcels that are currently out for bid, but, you know, as we alluded to, this is the first step in the process that we're trying to get right, and we want to move further. We've actually had some interest in seeing a larger list of where we're going from here, which is promising, certainly.
Do you think the information that came out of the article was clear to help bidders? I mean, it talked, I did see about the down deposit that is necessary with each of them. It talked about how they would conclude business with us, and they told them that we had done our title work on these particular properties.
We did, we did. I think that the responses that we've gotten have been positive, that it was informative. And would like to go over it again, that we are having the workshop on February 28th, which is still 30 days ahead of the March 28th deadline. And that's going to be an opportunity for anyone that's interested in these parcels. And the letters went out today, 100-plus letters went out to all the abutters as well. So I think we're doing a very good job of getting the word out to all interested parties.
Well, thank you very much for your effort. This is truly a landmark approach on ours to get these back on the tax roll. So thank you for your effort.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? All right, as Town Manager mentioned, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development, is going to give us a update on where we're going with some proposed modifications with non-residential zoning. Welcome.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you, Eric, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. We've begun work at the direction of the Town Council Subcommittee, the Committee on Zoning and Regulation, at looking at our non-residential zoning districts or commercial zoning districts to make sure that they're as business-friendly as possible. Certainly, we would like to make sure that we're doing everything we can for both existing businesses who are here and perhaps looking to expand or stay in the town of Barnstable, and new businesses that are interested in coming into Barnstable to make sure that the process to do that is streamlined and, and open as possible. So we, right now, we're focusing, we're focusing our efforts on two areas. The first one being the commercial area in Centerville, which has been the, kind of the topic of discussion for, for a long time. But we're looking at this area on Route 28 to make the zoning in that area, again, more business-friendly, but also doing it in a way that doesn't contribute to the proliferation of zoning districts that we sometimes see here in the town of Barnstable. So over the next month, Planning and Development staff is going to continue data gathering and analysis, looking at what structures and uses are there that meet current zoning and which ones don't. And then creating essentially a user guide of all of our existing zoning districts, what uses are permitted there, so we can hopefully look at either building off some of those zoning districts or replacing some of those zoning districts with, again, one that are more business-friendly and reduce the time from, from a business submitting a permit application to actually being able to open those, their doors. The second area that we're looking at, of course importantly, is the Route 132 Regional Commercial Corridor. And I think we've, we've informed the council before that we have started work looking at the four major regional retail centers there. Those retail centers, they're a very distinct type of development on the corridor, and they're also hampered by a very complex regulatory setting. So establishing new district regulations that will recognize that these areas are in various phases of development. Some of them are well-performing, some of them obviously have redevelopment potential. It's something that I think we should prioritize, again, to ensure their success. Again, expanding the permitted uses there, thinking about incorporation of residential development to reflect the changing nature of retail. And then looking at loosening setback requirements, enhancing landscape requirements to produce the character of the development that is so important to our quality of life. So we've been working on that proposal and are looking forward to bringing that to the council and the public for evaluation. The other thing that we're looking at on that corridor is that there are several locations there where zoning map amendments have really happened in response to specific development proposals, and there hasn't really been a good comprehensive look at the corridor. And sometimes this has resulted in kind of a patchwork of zoning in different places that, again, really doesn't, doesn't make sense from a business perspective. And, again, not necessarily waiting for a proposal to come forward to, to look at what zoning is appropriate there. So we're hoping to, again, provide some initial thoughts to that committee next month on what zoning changes might be appropriate in, in locations to clean up that map.
Great. Any questions or comments for Counselor Beedenbender?
Thank you, Elizabeth. Because the commercial zone that you're looking at in Centerville falls both in mine and Paul's precinct, would it, could we get together, the three of us, to just speak specifically and have a chance, it's sort of like a workshop for the three of us to sit down and review that? And I'd also like to float out the idea of perhaps you coming to one of the Centerville Civic Association meetings so you can sort of speak to sort of the leaders of that group and give people a sense of what's, you know, what the town is looking at so they're involved in the process early.
Sure. Again, and, you know, that's why, that's why I did want to emphasize that we're just at that data gathering phase right now.
When we, when it gets to that appropriate time, you know, now is not the appropriate time, but I just want to put it in your mind so that when we get a little bit farther into the process, that we incorporate that.
Of course.
Okay. That's great, thank you.
Anyone else? Vice President Crocker.
Yes, I think I can assist you with that thought. We've spoke at length of it today, and my counselors who are on the committee with me were very inclusive in it. We're just going through the first steps, as Elizabeth says. And then we clearly said we wanted to invite all the counselors from Centerville in as well as perhaps the civic association. So there's a full, inclusive effort here, and I assure you, you won't be shut out of the process. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, well, thank you for the updates. We'll be seeing the Town Manager soon for some presentations. At this time, Vice President Crocker, could we act on the minutes of February 1st, 2018?
Yes, Mr. President. In our packets today, we have a Town Council meeting February 1, 2018. Minutes as drafted, I offer.
I have a second. All those in favor approving the minutes of February 1st, 2018? All those opposed or abstain? One abstention. All right, now we have communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. And I just want to start that off with two announcements, actually. One, pleased to report that the council has officially notified the Town Manager that we wish to extend his contract beyond 2019. And the Town Manager has informed the council in return in writing that he wishes to stay on beyond 2019. So, it's good news. So, so I've... He's hard at work. That's why, that's why, that's why we want to extend him. To that... To that end, I've formed a contract committee that'll work through a extension that the full council will get to look at. And the counselors that have agreed to serve on that committee are Counselor Rapgusseti, Counselor Cullum, and Counselor Neri. So I appreciate the three of you stepping forward, and we hope to bring that contract extension forward to the council in the next, you know, several weeks, couple months here, and get that nailed down. The second announcement... The second announcement, and the Town Manager will touch on some of this tonight, including the Armory, which is on the agenda for First Read, but we have a number of town-owned assets, structures beyond just parcels of land that we, in some cases, have talked about, what are we going to do with them for over a decade? And we really want to move on these and actually get some positive decisions made for the community. So, going to re-task, well, not re-task, but add to the charge of the Asset Management Committee to take up these structures in town, along with the Town Manager and his staff, to be a subcommittee to have some of these discussions, to kind of vet through some proposals before they crystallize into actual items that would come before the council for our full consideration. So, I wanted to make that announcement as well, that that will be a change coming to the Asset Management Committee, who's done great work going through the parcels, as just mentioned, along with the Assistant Town Manager's assistants and procurement and others to get that ready. That was a year-long project that's still ongoing, but I think the committee is ready to take on some other activity as well. So, those are my two announcements and I'll open it up to other councilors. Anyone? All right. Okay. We're going to move right into the presentations. The Town Manager, Mark Els. Mark, you're going to do the fiscal 2019 Comprehensive Waste Management, Waste Water Management Plan?
Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager. It's funny you said that about, because I always tell my staff to look into people's eyes and smile. So, I apologize that I didn't turn around and smile. Thank you for this opportunity to give you an update on the Comprehensive Water Management Planning that we're doing here in the town of Barnstable. I've given each of you a handout that'll follow the presentation that I have. And it is a, it is a fairly high-level overview and you know, certainly, I'm here to answer any questions. Director Santos is here to assist me in the event that we want to get into details on this. But I think probably it could have been during the budget hearings last year or shortly thereafter, I had, I had said to the Town Council, and it coincided with meeting some of the deadlines we had within the 208 plan as well, which actually concluded back in 2016 that the next 18 months to 24 months were going to be a very busy time relevant to comprehensive water management planning. And so, we've proceeded knowing that DPW took it internal to their credit. I don't know that we've had as strong of an engineering staff at Public Works in my years here as we do now. And so, they began compiling the needed information to do this type of study. They began to develop tools with our geographic information system to undertake this, this type of comprehensive evaluation. And then they began to develop the Comprehensive Water Management Plan, which they worked with our RAC to do. That's, that's the Water Resources Advisory Committee. And they did so and they completed that draft plan, which was brought before Town Council. And so, they completed their, their task in that process. They brought this plan before Town Council and presented it. So now, we're in the winter of 2018 and I'm giving you this update and we, and so I'll go over that in a moment. But we're also really looking, and you'll see it in our CIP and you'll see it with our zoning efforts and you'll see it with the establishment shortly of objectives within our housing plan and other more non-traditional institutional-type looks at how we are aligning what we're trying to accomplish with the priorities that we have. And I am of the belief that completing a Comprehensive Water Management Plan is one of our priorities in this community. So that's what I want to do relevant to establishment of these objectives for 2019. This is also a little bit of insight into some of the capital projects you'll see coming your way in the soon-to-be-completed, I think even by the end of this week, we'll be going to print on the FY19 capital budget. So, you'll be getting that shortly and that's in your budget schedule if you want to see the specific date. Beyond this, we're going to have public outreach and feedback. We're going to be, we're going to be doing updates, so I'll be back in front of you with another update this summer and then moving toward a final document. So, I think it's very important that perhaps waiting till summer isn't a good idea and on a regular basis, as part of my Town Manager, as I speak about water quality issues, I should also be speaking about the many efforts we'll have relevant to our Comprehensive Water Management Plan. For the viewing public's sake, I also gave a very similar presentation to Board of Health late in December for a specific, leading to a specific end. This, this particular end for this presentation will be a little bit broader. But a big part of the focus is looking at the coastal recharge areas we have within our community. And we have five systems in Barnstable. We have Pompan, Pompanessett Shoestring Bay, we have Three Bays, this is heading left to right on my picture up here, Centerville River, East Bay, Lewis Bay, and then Barnstable Harbor. And in the case of all of those watersheds, except for Centerville, East Bay, we share them with others. We share them with Mashpee and Sandwich for Pompanessett Bay and Three Bay. We share them with Sandwich and Yarmouth for Barnstable Harbor and we share it with Yarmouth for Lewis Bay. And we will have, and I'll describe briefly the different efforts that are going on, but there are many efforts. Some traditional-type methods that I'll talk about in a minute, some completely new and innovative, whether it be from a regulatory standpoint, like the intermunicipal agreement that we've signed into with Yarmouth and Mashpee and the watershed permit that we are in the process of preparing with Yarmouth and Mashpee for Pompanessett Shoestring Bay. I expect that probably we'll be in discuss, we are in discussions on Lewis Bay with Yarmouth at this point to do the same thing. And we'll also be in discussions with Three Bays area, again, Mashpee and Sandwich in that area. You can see Mashpee's actually a very tiny portion in there, you can see the gray there on the left side of Three Bays. Sandwich much larger up in the head of this and us right in the lower portions where actually the physical bay exists. Centerville River and East Bay is all us, again, Lewis Bay. And then in Barnstable Harbor, you know, I think, I guess, being a person who looks at it, we've got problems with nutrient loading along our south side. We really, we don't have problems with nutrient loading in Barnstable Harbor for the most part. And I, and I think we'll have a very different strategy there and we may want to nail that one first. I mean, that one is in good health. So, we're going to want to make sure that, we're waiting for a final study there from CMAS, who had done our nutrient loading studies. But, you know, I really think we ought to nail down exactly what we want to see happen there so that we don't end up in a different situation. It's a very different system on the north side to the south side with the flushing and some of the large undeveloped areas in the marsh area, but still, why not protect it? Then we're not worrying about that one. We can go down to the other four and try to work together with our abutting communities on how to deal with those particular issues. The other part of this that I think we can't lose focus on, and I'll speak again to it later, is that this just isn't about nutrient loading. The last time we did a wastewater facilities plan, it was focused on Title V systems and public water supply. This time, it's focused on nutrient loading primarily. But within that, our major issues and priorities for our community such as accommodating housing, accommodating economic development as a priority, so that we have a good balanced approach to what our comprehensive plan says for our community. So you see these efforts in looking at zoning, you see these efforts in looking at housing. And you will see those integrated in what we will bring forward in recommendations. It won't be a singly-focused effort. The other area that's speculative, but it's no different from my experience than nutrient loading, when I, when we were doing the last wastewater facilities plan, I was the person who was tasked with accomplishing it. And I was constantly saying at that point, we got to include nutrient loading. And in fact, we made a big argument with the state to let us do a pilot in Three Bays so that we could try to model what the load was. And they said at first, no, no, no. And so here we are today in a much different position. I would have to say the same, and I have in the past to you all, about emerging contaminants. This is a significant challenge across the country and certainly here with our unique environment. You know, I said recently that it's not like other places where you have a user group and then you have perhaps a reservoir, you know, miles away. We stand on top of the water we drink. So we have to be very knowing of the impacts that we have and we have to be forward-thinking about those impacts and make sure that we try not to do anything that erodes that resource because I think everybody's in agreement that water is kind of at the heart of all that we do here in our quality of life on Cape Cod. So, we're going to integrate that as well. It's a hard target to hit, especially when you give it to engineers, because they're linking it to the, to the regulation and, and, you know, known, known targets so that they can try to come up with a plan that addresses those. In these cases, much like nutrient loading was 20 years ago, we didn't have those clear, defined regulations or targets. But you, again, you have to be mindful of them and we are in our planning, we are, I think, in the preventative programs that we want to do to educate our public on not just point sources. We've talked a lot about things like fire training academy recently, we've talked a lot about airport and use of fire foams. But really, when we get down to the levels that the regulators are looking at advising us on, they haven't, they haven't, you know, created drinking water standards in many cases. But, you know, it's parts per trillion, .07 parts per trillion, which is, which is minuscule amounts of contamination in very large amounts of water. So I think we need to reach out to our public and to our youth and educate them on the sources of these and hopefully, they'll begin to think about how they might modify buying behaviors or other behaviors so that ultimately, 20 years from now, when these regs are on the books, we'll be in a much better position here because we are in a very sensitive environment. Won't solve it, but quite honestly, people will say to me, where's it coming from? We don't have industry here. We don't produce these products here. It's us and we don't do it, you know, it's not, not to do it in a detrimental way, it's just the products that we use contain a whole bunch of stuff that when it ends up in the drinking water is problematic. And when it ends up in the drinking water at the levels that they're able to test at and now giving advisories on, it means we got to look at ourselves and say, what are we going to, what are we going to do about this? So, that'll be contemplated in our Comprehensive Water Management Plan as well. So you know, we don't just, we have three major wastewater facilities in town. We have water supply in town, we have our coastal embayments and we have all the other resources that interplay with this. And, and, you know, if the 208 plan gave us anything, it was the ability to look beyond kind of the traditional thought on this and go to the non-traditional approaches and looking at our bays and how our bays flush and how our channels are dredged so that we might think about the dredging program that we're looking at as part of our Comprehensive Water Management Plan that we're trying to accomplish as a non-traditional approach to how we might bring down some of these, these levels that we're concerned about. Looking at aquaculture, looking at innovative systems that, that haven't been approved by the regulators necessarily, but also providing our residents with the costs of all these different things so that they can really begin to think about what's the best way to put this mix together so that we can protect our, you know, the quality of life that we have, but at the same time, afford it. How are we going to do that? And that, that piece can't be left till the end. And you'll see that in my little chart that, you know, it's, now's the time to really start to look at the financial and the institutional issues related to moving forward with this so that we're not dealing with it in a reactionary sense at the end. But we have three facilities in town. We have the larger facility in Hyannis. You can see here that it's the green area on this map. We have a small communal system down at Red Lily Pond that we manage for private homes. And then the school has a small treatment plant up between the 4-5 school and the elementary school off of Osterville West Barnstable Road. You can also see those, those tan areas, those are the Zone 2s to our public water supplies. So you can see that about, well, almost 40% of the land in town sits on top of Zone 2s to public drinking water supplies. So, again, we have to be very mindful of how we proceed with this and, and it isn't just limited to the nutrient loaded embayments. We need to look at our drinking water. We need to look beyond that to what we're doing with, with our zoning and that falls into the institutional and our housing programs and our economic development efforts to make sure that we put all these pieces together correctly and come out with a good 20-year plan and emerging contaminants. One of the products from the, from the Water Resources Advisory Committee in Public Works was to identify where we might want to consider infrastructure moving forward. So as we get into this, this will be one of the layers that we'll spend a fair amount of time on. And it's got to do with nutrient loading and economic development and housing and protection of other resources that we have in our community. A few of the projects you're going to see coming forward this year in the CIP, the five-year CIP, but specific asks. We've got some repair work we've got to do within the system, upgrading of the Pleasant Street and through the Pleasant Street area. But as we move west, we're looking at, you're all familiar that, you know, we, there's development going on up in the Attucks area where it intersects with Route 132. So we've had the opportunity to, to work with that development, those developers and looking to put sewer expansion there. So that's, that'll actually be a design, construct project that'll be coming before the council. We're also looking at the corridors of Route 28, West Main Street, Route 132, which for the most part has, has adequate searing at this point. And then, you know, heading to the east side and southeast side of Quocket Lake and up to the Finney's Lane intersection with Route 28 and south of that. This will be a, we'll start, we're going to ask for preliminary design money to get going on this and there'll be a lot of public and certainly council interaction here because we're going to be first looking at mains through these areas and then ultimately expansion into the residential neighborhoods and the mains primarily are where the commercial is located. So we're going to have to have lots of discussions as we move forward with this and how it will be done and when it will be done. All of these are in areas that need to remediate nutrient loading. So, if you go back to the previous map, you'll see them on there as areas that have already been identified when we've gone through that technical evaluation. I expect that by the end of a 20-year plan, we will have addressed all of those colored areas that I had shown in one way or another. But we're not going to jump to one particular conclusion and certainly, we're going to talk with our community step by step through our leadership and council so that we have a good public involvement every step of the way. Couple of other items, you know, we're proceeding with the CWMP. I'm saying here, we really need to start to talk and make sure that everybody's understanding of the financial and institutional aspects and we're actively working on that, whether it be zoning or whether it be... it be zoning or, or whether it be, you know, looking at what was done in previous efforts and how we might wanna modify that going forward. But we've added a new dimension, which is these non-traditional approaches, whether it be the Mill Pond Dredge Project, whether it be aquaculture, or the ability to include, you know, flushing of embayments, and if we can show and quantify that, we can utilize it to help remediate some of these issues. So that, that, that's, that's a newer opportunity for us to, to begin to address this. Certainly, there's the sewer expansion approach, kind of the, the more traditional hard pumps and pipes approach. Beyond that, we're looking regionally, we're looking, we're looking to interact with Yarmouth. You've heard about a grant we got recently to look at this, you know, and, and we will continue those, those active discussions with our abutting communities, because every community on Cape Cod is faced with the same challenge. And we won't correct the problems in these embayments that we share with other communities unless we all come together and sit at the table and figure out how we're gonna do it, and then agree to that, which is gonna be time-consuming. But you need to do that, you need to take that time, you need to take that approach. You need to involve people at all levels, or else you won't be successful in the end product. I've already been before Board of Health to brief them on this in a little more specific sense, because they play a major role in this. We don't wanna be in a position where we're moving forward with something that they are doing something contrary to. We wanna know how, we want them to know how we're proceeding. Certainly, staff will be part of our team moving forward, Board of Health staff will be part of our team in moving forward. But we want them to be able to look at things like their interim estuaries regulation that they've put in place, because as we know, you know, each layer of, of different regulation that we have can conflict or complement other efforts that we're trying. So we're having discussions with them as we expand sewer, when will you lift interim regulation, will you do it in specific areas relevant to where that's planned, at what point? How will we deal with property owners who have systems at various points in their life? And if you know that expansion's going to occur of a technology, searing or other, that will help to remediate, we don't want you making the resident incurring cost that two years down the line, they're gonna say, I wish I hadn't done that. So we really wanna have a tight effort here with our Board of Health and our health staff so that we minimize those experiences for our residents, certainly, because we need their support or else we won't be successful in this. But I will be back before the Board of Health shortly to continue discussions about that interim estuaries regulation. Work with DEP BMF to make, that's Bureau, Department of Environmental Protection, Bureau of Municipal Facilities, State Revolving Fund. Sorry, you throw acronyms up there and it's like, oh yeah, everybody knows what that is, they don't. The people always call me, believe it or not, I get emails, what, what does this mean? And I say, I'm sorry, we threw an acronym up there. So that is an agency, that's pretty much the only consistent grant agency that's out there that works with us to try to help us, give us typically low interest, they do have no-interest loans, so that's why I put no-interest loans, we wanna get to the no-interest loan, especially when we're looking at 20 or 30 years. And they have been giving us principal subsidies. So whether it's 3%, sometimes it can be more, dependent on the pool, every dollar helps. It's worth pursuing it, especially for, you know, projects of these magnitudes. So we, we, we have a wonderful working relationship with them. They stepped right in on the water supply side too, immediately when we, when we had challenges, and they're there to assist, they're there to work with us. So we will continue to do that, but it's gotta be part of that financial planning that we're gonna do. We wanna commence public education, and I know this is a wonderful opportunity to do it, but we really need to be talking with our public about all those things I've already identified, those are, those are what I've already gone over, whether it's the onsite septic systems, or nutrient loading, or emerging contaminants, or these non-traditional opportunities. And we really have to explain to our public when it's an aquaculture or a dredging project or an innovative approach to something, why it's worth knowing, why it's worth looking at that as an option and supporting that as we go forward, because I think the only way we're ever gonna get to the outcome we want is a mix of all of these things. And if our public doesn't understand it, they're gonna put up blocks, and there'll be enough hurdles for us. And so we just wanna try to educate people on this. I, I, I think, you know, preventative medicine is the way to go here and on the contaminants issue, I've already said that. I hope to develop programs with our public schools to start educating at a very young age what these products are, how young, young individuals who are gonna become, you know, more prevalent consumers in the marketplace might make good educated decisions about what they buy and what they don't buy, because they're in our perfumes and our makeups and our cookware, and it's everywhere, you know, products we use to, you know, stain-resistant products we use, it's everywhere. So the more they know about that, the more they can make decisions, because you're either gonna deal with it upfront or you're gonna pay for it later on. So I, I think that's time, effort, well-spent. And this is really just a couple of quick pictures to show you, these are our commercial versus our residential zone, so that's why you can see that much of our searing falls in the commercial area that we have. So as we expand, really, we're expanding, we continue to expand within that commercial area for what we're proposing, and we're beginning to move into residential area. You know, we had put in place two-acre zoning a few years ago, the yellow area is the area served by sewer, the other area isn't. As we expand searing, we'll have the opportunity to revisit that zoning. And again, that, that interim estuaries reg, because that was put in place because the infrastructure wasn't there to support the development that was contributing the nutrient load. So all of this has to go hand in hand if we're gonna, you know, have public support certainly moving forward. And even then, it'll be tough, given some of the, certainly, financial and other challenges we'll have. So we're moving on this, I wanna give you continuous updates, I wanna start public education processes and programs, and we're here to answer any and all questions that you have. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions, comments for the town manager? Councilor Rapp, Chris Eddy?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Mark, for this update. I wonder too if maybe the map should reflect the private wastewater treatment facilities, because there are several of them in town, just identify them, just so people know where they are on the map for our identification.
We will add that. It may be on Public Works map, this was, I take the blame if it's not there, that was mine.
Okay.
So maybe it will be there.
That's all, thank you.
Counselor Flores?
I'm just curious, Mark, on the slide number three of the map, the northern boundary on Sandy Neck, why doesn't it go right to the shoreline?
My guess is that it's heading north there, the recharge area isn't heading south, but I, I'll, you mean the blue line going through that?
The blue line, it's showing the northern part of Sandy Neck not being part of our boundary, I'm just, we own that.
I, I would, no, no, that's, that's the recharge, coastal recharge area line.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm guessing that the, the groundwater there is assumed to move north, not south into the bay. Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Mark. I'm looking at this particular map, I don't know how to describe it, wastewater planning proposed sewer, the pages aren't numbered, so, but there's an area in the center that is not sewed, all right, that's.
That's correct.
Yeah, so that is what I call Quaker Village.
Okay, that's the area on the east and west side of Bursas Way, south of 28.
Which is right next to, am I correct in saying where this triangle is, is where up?
This is the plant, this is our wastewater plant?
To the north, yes. That, that big open area with no roadways.
Nothing on it yet, but, so, why has that area in the, so close to the wastewater, it's not indicated here, but there is a little pond there, a little source of water that's gathered there, which we're doing some great work around, cleaning it up. Why was that never sewed?
I, I can go back historically, I, I have no explanation for that.
Okay, it's, it's a pretty congested little area, lot of houses there, that could also be expanded into two floors if we had sewage in there. So I'm just, just curious about that, but thank you very much.
I, I will come back to you with historically why it hasn't been, it's always been shown as infilling, when, you know, typically, when you think about traditionally expanding a sewer system, you do it radially from the plant. But our challenges are multiple, and when you begin to look at things like nutrient loading, it spreads it out real quick, it wouldn't be necess, so it would've been logical that that would've been sewed. So I'll have to go back and see what the decision was not to do that, it's tight, dense lots?
I think it's very possible that our plant was put in place before that area got developed, I think there's a lot of ex-military houses that were moved there and kind of mushroomed, yeah, okay, thank you.
Maybe, Mark, if you just wanna quickly, just for the benefit of the full council here, you know, when the waste, when the Hyannis wastewater plant was originally built, and I mean, how far back are we going?
39. Yeah, and then, you know, in the 60s and 70s, you know, it really began to develop. And actually, I think in the late 60s, there was a, I believe, CDM might've done a project where they sewed the whole town for us, back in the old grant days, and that never happened for, for, again, I'd have to go back historically, my, my time has only been the last 30 years, so. But yeah, when they, when they put the wastewater treatment, their plant there, there wasn't the level of development around it, there wasn't a Cape Cod mall, there wasn't a lot of what we know and, and assume has been there probably, you know, predating a treatment plant. So, you know, that, that's why it was located there, because it was kind of way out there back when it was originally sited, so.
Before all of us, well, most of us, I can't speak for everybody up here. Just kidding. Any other comments, Counselor Schnapp?
Councilor President, I'm, I'm very excited to see the focus on the public education, because I think that's vital, both to get public to be supportive of the, the changes that we're gonna have going forward. One of the things, and it might be embedded in here, is education regarding some of the other sources of nitrogen loading other than Title V's, will there also be a focus on that in public education?
Yes, we will cover everything. And people should ask about the balance between phosphorus and nitrogen, that's a real, if you haven't read the pond study, that's a really interesting one, because as we drop nitrogen, I'm, I'm curious, because as we drop nitrogen, will it release phosphorus that's been bound up because we've had higher nitrogen levels? And if so, what will that do to the freshwater bodies? So, and that's in our study that we've done, so it's just very interesting, there's all sorts of very interesting, that's why I think we have a wonderful opportunity with our youth to engage them in this. It, it will vest them in who we are and what we do, but we're on the front edge of study so many times that it's a wonderful opportunity for our youth to have that exposure, because they'll be able to take this and go anywhere in the country, and they'll be ahead of what they're trying to deal with in many cases, so. Yeah, it's a wonderful opportunity to, to educate and, and hopefully build support, and then we'll all just have to come together and figure out, okay, what are we gonna do and how are we gonna pay for it? So.
Anyone else? Counselor Beanbender?
So I was reading through the newsletter of the Barnstable Water Collaborative last week, and there on the back page, all of a sudden, I'm like, hey, that's my kid. And she, what, what's, it's, it's really amazing what they're doing with their learning laboratory over around Mill Pond, which touches on all the things you were talking about, these sort of multiple approaches, but what's also pretty cool about that project over there is that the data they're collecting is setting the baseline for us so that we can, we can measure the impact of what's going on, so that once, once we have those, those metrics in place, we can then determine whether or not that might be a good fit for another area. So I, just a, a long way around saying that, I am really excited that all of this is happening and that we're moving in this direction, and I know that there were people out there in the public going, you know, yeah, but we're not focusing enough, or we're not putting enough effort forward, or, you know, yes, the, the report was done, but then nothing, nothing is going to take place. And I think this shows that that is indeed not true at all, and that we are putting forth a, a very significant effort on this. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Crocker?
Mark, we had participated in a group meeting with the school committee, and we had great discussions with them about how their real estate could assist us with the septic expansion. Perhaps you can tell and speak of the reception we received there and what some plans might be for future expansion, but how we're looking inclusively at, at every opportunity we have.
We, we are, and another CIP that you'll see coming forward has to do with studying effluent discharge and designing, there's actually design money in there for future effluent discharge sites, because we will have limitations for effluent discharge at the water pollution control facility. And it, it's more radially from the plant, not, not putting it in the sand and having it disappear, but making sure that we don't have any detrimental impacts beyond our site. So we also wanna look at alternative sites, and we have to be mindful of what other resources it's in proximity to, whether it's water supply, or, or lakes or ponds, or, or saltwater bodies. As part of looking at this comprehensively, we're looking at, okay, where are all the fields in our town, and which fields are we gonna put under construction, and might those be potential sites for subsurface discharge? So as our school project comes forward and other projects come forward from our field study, you're gonna see us looking at the potential for putting subsurface discharge at appropriate locations. We already have subsurface discharge over at the four, five school, and people play, you know, it's actively utilized, so people don't even realize that exists. So that's a wonderful opportunity for us to kind of integrate what we're doing with our projects here. We did discuss this, was a limited discussion with leadership and school superintendent, myself, leadership from schools committee and from, you know, town council, and they were receptive to that, if it's appropriate and it's, you know, it's something that's below surface and, you know, it, it doesn't, it isn't a detriment to a project like that. So makes sense, so that we're not going into areas that are largely wooded-upland areas, we're gonna put them in something that's already open, that will already be maintained, that will already have gone under construction, so. And that's an active discussion we're having with the schools, it's an active discussion we're having as each project comes forward to look at renovating fields that we have, so. And we'll also look at other methods, and there are other methods to dispose of it.
Anyone else? All right, so we'll roll back into the next presentation, Fiscalia 2019 Restructuring Plan. Welcome back, it's a long walk from the cabinet over there.
It's okay, good evening.
All this staff in the room and you doing like all the work, Mark, I mean, everybody's...
I could have Andy come up, because he's actually...
Right on track.
That's right, that's right. Mark L., Town Manager. I, I thought it was important to share with you, and I, I've been speaking about this with staff and, and certainly went asked with public about the restructuring that we're planning on doing in 2019. Earlier, one of your public speakers referred to our mission, and truly, it's at the core of all that we, that we do in our municipal government, and it's... And it's so critical that we are all clear on why we're here doing what we do every day, and the resources that you give us are aligned with the priorities of the community, and that we can take those toward the outcomes, the desired outcomes that we want for our community. And certainly, the quality of life here in Barnstable is at the core of all that we do, maintaining that unique character that we have, engaging our citizens, as your, as your mission statement says, and responding and anticipated, anticipating the needs of our community. So, in thinking about that, and in looking at our organizational structure, we took a bite last year in 2018 by pulling out our building department from regulatory services and establishing it as its own department, very much focused on what we had seen in a need to better align our resources with those priorities that we have in our community. And, and also, in an effort to provide better customer service. So, the key areas in 2009, and by the way, the 2018 was a very successful restructuring. You know, we, we were able to streamline permitting, we have better communications, we were able to eliminate some of the kind of longstanding complaints that we had been receiving. And we did it without, you know, there was kind of a, a net neutral change that we were able to impose. And that's, that also will occur with this restructuring. It, it will be, from a budget standpoint, it's a, it's really a neutral change that we're having. We're not looking to cut people, that's not our intent here. We're looking to realign our resources with the many priorities that we have in our community. And I'll speak to how it aligns with, with our, with our mission and our strategic plan, and what we hope to accomplish moving forward. Right there, key areas, aligns with our strategic plan, customer focus. We wanted to understand where our points of exposure were, so we could modify our structure to be able to, to minimize that, looking at inefficiencies and redundancies that we might have, looking at the work that wasn't being accomplished, and by realigning resources, being able to move more positively toward those, achieving those things that were priorities. Better asset management is built into this. Also, a better training program for our staff, so that in the event that, that one of us is no longer here, certainly, looking outside is always an option, but I hope to develop the best candidates internally. And that's, that's a personal objective that I have. I think we have great staff, and I think we absolutely have the opportunity to at least give them the chance to be able to be considered for those positions. What, what our restructuring does in 2019, it disestablishes the regulatory services department. It will no longer exist. Two-hundred Main Street emphasis shifts from regulatory to customer service. The building commissioner and the director of planning and development play a lead role in assisting us in doing this. We plan to shift the health division, and this has actually already begun. The, the relationships have, have, have occurred. You know, we, we need to physically shift the budget, but, but health and planning are both utilizing our, our e-permitting at this point. So, health is going to align with our building department, and we'll, we'll work under our building commissioner. Conservation and parking enforcement, and I'll come back to that word enforcement with parking in a little while, will move under our planning department. And what this does is it aligns our resources with our priorities, reduces time and effort businesses must spend in obtaining compliance. And again, I spoke, you know, about leveraging our technology, but certainly, a better utilization of our e-permitting, and, and just in general, looking at common ways that we can make our, you know, our permitting process, whether it be for our resident or our business, more, businesses more streamlined. Parking enforcement program is proposed to move over to planning development, and we're going to call it parking management division. It's been my opinion that I think, and, and it was not, it was not the staff. The staff was doing what the regulations tasked them with doing. We're going to, we're really relooking at that, and we're going to call it parking management, because the primary focus shouldn't be enforcement. They have to enforce the regulations we have in place, but it should be to manage our, our residents, our visitors, our businesses, in a way that, that, again, aligns them with the priorities, so that our businesses, our residents, our visitors can have a, have a wonderful quality of life while they're here. And, you know, we, we really need to look at it that way. And, you know, I can give you examples of, you know, we need to look at our parking regs, at our beaches, that require stickers in off-season. We need to correct the fact that twelve months a year here, if you don't have a sticker and you park at a beach that requires a sticker, you're supposed to be ticketed. What would we do that for, to a visitor who drove from Kansas and came to the Cape and wanted to go to Colville's Beach and just look at the water? Why would we ticket them in November? We wouldn't. We shouldn't. We did. So, we need to, we need to look at these things, and we need to correct them. And they're easy. They're easy. And our people are the ones who say, this is easy, and they tell us how to do it. It's actually very exciting. It's a very exciting, I get to stand here, Andy's the one who has to jump down into the mud and make it all work, so, just so you know. But, but it is, so that's an example, a very small example. Licensing will remain as a department under the town manager's office, and what will be left of what was regulatory services is licensing and weights and measures. Another major shift we'll do is Marine and Environmental Affairs Division under Community Service, Community Services is going to shift out and be a standalone department under the town manager's office. If we jump back to the conversation about comprehensive water management planning, if we look at what we're trying to do with our coastal resources, whether it be utilization of our, of our, you know, of our. Yeah, well, of our aquaculture, of our marinas, of dredging projects, that needs to be moved to a director level, and it needs to be sitting at the table with us when we're strategizing in there and participating in that discussion. And, and it's not that they didn't have that opportunity, but being a division head versus being a director is significantly different. And just seeing what has occurred, having the building commissioner at the table, makes me, you know, completely confident that having the director of Marine and Environmental Services at the table will be equally as beneficial to us, again, in aligning what we're trying to achieve here with the resources you give us. And then finally, asset management. We're going to separate out, at this point, it's two positions, but this is an organization-wide effort, about two positions under our assistant town manager and myself, and really prioritize asset management. You've heard about it, but we're just, we're touching the surface at this point. I mean, the town of Barnstable has, you know, well over a thousand municipal parcels, some of them very active, like here at Town Hall, and some of them, ones that we don't even know we own. I mean, we know we own them, but in general, people don't know. We need to, we need to know exactly what we're doing, what's the purpose of our assets? We got to make decisions about, are we going to maintain them to, to the level to which we want them to perform? And if we're not, then we need to make decisions what we're going to do with them. And that's a pretty stream, you know, that's a pretty straightforward equation we got to go through for all of our assets. We have a lot of them, so it's going to take time. But it's got to be a priority of, in the town manager's office, and the only way to do that is to move those positions directly under our oversight. Now, how does this align with your strategic plan? Well, we see it as enhancing eight of your, six of your eight priority areas, helps with communication, regulatory process and performance, environmental and natural resources, infrastructure, economic development, and public health and safety. What action will this require of the council? Well, I'm briefing you now, because in March, there'll be a first read next meeting on the, the changes to the administrative code. Because right now, our administrative code describes how our organization has been, because you'll see when you look at it, that some of it, you'll say, well, that's not the way it is, because it hasn't been updated in a while. So it may have been two iterations ago or more, but we're going to bring it up to date. So that'll be the first thing, it'll be a first read next meeting, and then, you know, second read, second, second meeting. That will need to proceed, but it will be the basis for what we're going to bring in in our FY 2019 operating budget. So you will see all that we've described in this restructuring, and hopefully approved through the administrative code, reflected in the operating budget. And I can only tell you that the first quarter of FY nineteen will shift the challenge from what Andy has done with our department heads to what Director Milne will do in shifting those finances, because that is, is a, a big effort. And he's knowing of it, but we've had to talk through that next piece. You just don't do this and then walk away. You're going to have to work with people on how things get processed, and where budgets are, and, you know, introduce people who haven't had those budgets before. And that's critical to us, you know, maintaining a sound financial base, so that we can move forward. So those are the two action items you'll see coming forward, and that's my overview. And again, Assistant Town Manager Clyburn's here with me to help describe any of the details you would like to have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. Is there any questions or comments for the town manager? No, well, I really, Councilor Schnep?
Just a quick question. For the presentation that we'll have on March first, if there's any way to, to condense this into an org chart before and after, that would be great, to visually see how.
So would you like it big picture, or, I mean, we have it right down to person by person, so you just want big picture?
Pretty much, but what you've really outlined here, I think that would be great to see how those are moving, so, thanks.
Yep, we'll do that.
Anyone else? All right, well, I appreciate the update, especially ahead of the first read coming in March, you know, the budget close on its heel, so, thank you very much for all the information, Mark.
You're welcome.
All right, we are going to move to new business. We got one item, Vice President Crocker, could you please read and refer to a public hearing, item 2018-063?
Yes, Mr. President. Item 218-063, appropriation and transfer order on the amount of two hundred, one, uh, $200,175 for the evaluation, design, and permitting of the renovation of the armory building located at 225 South Street, Hyannis. Move to a public hearing on 3/1/18.
Okay, I have a second, before I call for the vote. Mark, did you want to give a quick overview, just to kind of help inform the public hearing next meeting, as well as council discussion?
Yes, and thank you. Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager. In my rationale, I've, I've given a, a general background, that in 1950, the town of Barnstable took municipal land it owned on South Street and granted it to the Commonwealth for the purposes of building a National Guard Armory. In 1958, the armory was built and was operated by the state until 2006. The armory building located in Hyannis was turned over to the town of Barnstable in 2006 from the state. With the return of this access to municipal control, there was, there were very strict limitations set by the state for any reuse by the town of Barnstable. Several attempts through requests for proposals have been made by the town for the use of the armory. The limited responses and ultimate lack of success have primarily been associated with limited reuse restrictions, limiting reuse restrictions imposed by the state, hazmat abatement, and capital improvement costs. I've been involved, I think, directly or indirectly with all four of the RFPs that we have put out that have not resulted in us moving forward with any additional use or, or different use out there. The proposed capital improvement project is for the initial soft costs associated with architectural engineering design and limited hazmat testing and abatement needed at the armory in an effort to implement a phased capital improvement project. In addition to commencing the preliminary assessment and design, an internal evaluation of phased improvements and associated funding for said phasing would be developed and presented to the town council for consideration as this effort progresses toward the desired outcomes. The outcomes of this phased effort would allow the town to evaluate both municipal and leased options for future use of the facility. So, and I'll go into that briefly in a minute. This appropriation will be funded from the town's general fund reserves. The town's general fund surplus was certified at 16.2 million for fiscal year 2018. The state senate capital bond bill that was recently passed included 1.6 million in funding for renovations of this facility. The bill must be reconciled with the House version of the capital bond bill and approved by the governor to secure this funding. If, if successful, it could happen as soon as next fiscal year. So we see this, this opportunity, and, and this was a discussion that I had had with Senator Seer, when, when we were talking about potential funding opportunities for various projects. I pretty much walked in there with my entire CIP spreadsheet, after we went through with the different capital projects and the, what, what was, what would be eligible under this bond bill. I think I gave him maybe three, and he came, he, he came to this one. And that's how the 1.6 ended up being brought forward. So we'll see what happens there, but we need to move forward with this, this, this potential money certainly is a catalyst to, to have us step up here and ask for the money. We have asked for, we're really looking for, and you'll see it in the CIP, you know, another $600,000 to get us through design and abatement in that facility. We're looking at probably another 1.8, so a total of 2.6 million, to get us to the point where we can either use it as a municipal facility or go out to an RFP. When we've evaluated this, we started with everything from do-nothing, demo, demolish. Demo, just in today's dollars, is about 1.2 million dollars. But we can't demo it, they won't allow it. When I talk about these various restrictions, we can't sell it, we really can't demo it. If, we'd have to go back into the legislature and ask them. This, this does have historic significance, though I don't believe it's listed at this point. It's not. That's one of the things we may want to consider, because I've talked to Lindsay Council about potential CPC funds for this, and if it is listed, then we could absolutely go to them for historic funds. So that would be a decision point that we would want to make, but we'd also have to understand, once you receive a designation like that, you can't go back and decide, oh, I'd like to demo it. That's off the table. So we really need to think through step by step what we want to do here. And then there are other opportunities. For example, if we decided to go municipal, then we may want to create a public meeting room in there for which cable funds would be available for us to create that with the audio capabilities that certainly we have in this room and other rooms. So, I think we need to be, you know, very thoughtful step by step, figure out which way we want to go. We'll have some major decision points, certainly when we get to, are we going to try to do municipal use there, because then there'll be other properties that will say, okay, well, if we consolidate municipal use here, what will we do with those properties? If we're going to go out to RFP, then that'll be a different route. But at least we'll have a product that we can bring to market, and hopefully, you know, get to where we had hoped we would be over the last ten years. That's what this request is for.
Great, thank you, Mark. And I appreciate the information, I just wanted the council kind of have that ahead of the meeting two weeks from now, and the public as well, to kind of inform maybe questions you might bring at the next meeting, or, or the public would have during the public hearing. So I have a second, so all those in favor referring item 2018-063 to a public hearing on March first, 2018? And that is unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That ends the orders of the day. Our next regular meeting is Thursday, March first, 2018. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? And that is unanimous, have a great night, everybody.